A meeting of the Carver School Committee to order at 7:00 PM. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are you going to read the opening? You're not going to read both?
Yeah, so just a reminder that this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the government Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The meeting can be accessed live in the room at Town Hall, live on Area 58, and also live on Zoom. The first agenda item is comments from the general public. So if there's anybody in the Zoom who would be interested in participating in comments from the general public at this time, if you could put your name into the chat, that would be great. So this is an opportunity, if you'd like to participate in comments from the general public via Zoom, if you could put your name into the chat now.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. And while we're waiting for people to join, is there anyone that is in person that would like to speak? Hello.
Hello. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. My name's Samantha Muse. I live at 26 Beaver Dam Road in Carver, and I have four children that attend Carver schools. I would like to appeal to the parents, both listening and the parents here on the board. And my message is that it is time that we assert the highest level of parental rights and remember that our rights are not derived from DESI or Governor Baker or a school board, and that we need to remember that the boards and DESI do not have the right to do medical interventions or any other kind of interventions on our children. So we should not be presenting waivers to remove masks or waivers to say that you cannot test our children, or you cannot treat our children, you cannot vaccinate our children, because you don't have the right to do that without our permission. We need to be giving permission to these committees and these schools, not taking them away. And as soon as we give up that right and we start signing waivers, we have lost a piece of our parental rights. We're now saying that you have the right to do these things, and we need to take them away, and that is not the case. We need to assert ourselves, and I think that the parents listening tonight, even if you agree with all the decisions that have been made thus far, there will come a time when you no longer agree with something and some decision, and it's going to be too late because you have not asserted your parental rights now. So you need to do that now and make sure that you obtain those and keep those at the highest level possible so that when you disagree with something, you have the right to disagree. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I live at 26 Beaver Dam Road, Carver. Good evening. Tonight, I want to thank the members of the school committee for their upstanding display of principles and honest processes. Myself and other members of the community appreciate your efforts to do what is best for the students in Carver. Through the process of in-depth decision-making and consideration, the committee always opens the floor for public comments and seems to put real thought into the input we provide. Members of the committee hold each other accountable for proper protocol while still allowing for opposing views to be explained and heard out. Last week, I witnessed you all voting to re-up the list of protocols you intend to uphold as you sit on the Carver School Committee. This was encouraging to see the committee members collaborate on common goals. It only reinforced my belief that our committee here is fully capable of making decisions that quote, "represent the needs and interests of all children in the district," end quote, as stated in the agreed voted protocols. I do also want to share a short story with you tonight. Last month, DESI held a meeting at their headquarters in Malden, Massachusetts. On the agenda for this meeting was a discussion about the future recommendations DESI would be releasing for the summer and coming '21-'22 school year in regards to COVID-19 protocols. Also on the agenda that day was public comments portion of the meeting to allow the public to quote, "redress their government as a state in the Constitution of the United States" with their thoughts and concerns. Among those who arrived to speak were mothers, fathers, lawyers, educators, an OSHA safety specialist, and many, many, many more. They all went as public citizens to speak in a public DESI meeting, and not one of them was allowed to be heard or even allowed in the building to hear the meeting. Not one of them was allowed to speak at all to the DESI Board Committee that day. In fact, they were told that if the Board had extra time at the end of the meeting, keep in mind, they were scheduled in writing to meet until 1:00 PM that day, that at that time, with the extra time at the end, some of them may be able to voice their concerns as citizens at that time. At approximately 12:15 PM, 45 minutes early, the concerned citizens were informed that the DESI Board members had already left the building out a different entrance and were in fact gone. They had already left the property. It seems obvious that DESI does not hold the same principles and protocols that you all prevail in continuing, even when it's difficult to do so. It is for this reason that I want to ask you to consider something for the coming school year. Should DESI come out with recommendations for the fall that further restrict the freedoms of our students and our families, I would ask that you consider voting to not enforce their recommendations as mandates here in Carver. I fully understand the reasoning behind following DESI guidelines early on in the pandemic and even up until now. However, we now know that these regulations have been debunked by the private comments, emails, and actions of the very people pushing them on us. I believe that now is the time for our students and families to return to the American practice of deciding what is best for them and their own. Please allow our community here in Carver to decide for themselves in this coming school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott, it looks like we might be having a problem with audio on Zoom.
Sorry, Stephanie?
Some people have commented in the chat that they can't hear anything on Zoom.
I'm turning to Area 58 to see if they have any information.
Can someone please let us know if he can hear us now? Okay, we got a yes, so thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Crystal Wedby. I live at 69 Fosdick Road. I'm a mother of four, three of which who attend the Carver Elementary School. I just wanted to go along the same lines. I attended the DESI meeting last month, and they didn't let us in, didn't hear from any parents, and then they proceeded to sneak out the side entrance. I just wanted to say again that the DESI guidelines are just that, guidelines, and they are not a law, which the same as a mandate is not a law. And it's easy to understand the school following the guidelines to try and best protect the students and staff, and we appreciate everyone doing that with the information and the lack of information that we had all year long. And now we're sitting almost a year and a half later, and we've seen very contradictory statements from the people that we've trusted to give us the guidelines and the recommendations are inconsistent. I just hope that the school committee, instead of continuing to follow recommendations that don't seem to be truthful, and they're only truthful to some extent, that when we come back to voting on or deciding on what guidelines our children have to follow, I hope that everyone puts all the information, all the facts that we've seen throughout the year, like even the stuff that didn't make any sense, put it all into, you know, into one and really decide to vote on for the children and put them first. And I know I've seen everyone compliments and says thank you to the staff and the teachers all year long, which I 100% agree with, but I want to start seeing the children be put first and not just saying how well the staff and the teachers and everyone else is doing. I want to see the kids put first, and then the staff follows, because it's for the children. And I feel like they haven't been put first, and people keep shoving their knees to the side. One of my daughters goes to school, and she always tries to pull her mask down to breathe, and she constantly gets told, "Pull it up, pull it up," because, you know, you can't have your mask below your nose. But then she'll see, you know, a teacher pull it down, so then she'll pull hers down, and then she immediately gets scolded to pull her mask up. I'm just, I'm tired of seeing the negative impacts it has, like psychological and physical, and I feel like no one has a backbone to stand up and to actually put our kids first. And I just hope that within the next meetings over the summer that we see people putting the children first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Since people could not hear at home, do you want me to put that out there again? So if anybody who's Zoom, if they want to comment during public comment at this time, if you put your name into the chat, that would be great.
Thank you.
I don't see any.
Okay, so does anyone else in the room have anything they'd like to say? Okay, so we will, oh, do you?
That was my intention. Yeah, because we didn't have comments from the APC just because Tame was here. But I defer to Stephanie. Just defer to the chair.
You know, that's fine. That is fine. Oh, my gosh, that echo is crazy today. Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we move on to communications, if there are any.
No communications this evening.
So reports from the superintendent.
All right, we're glad to have Mr. Schultz here to go through the school improvement plan for the middle high school. So welcome, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll wait until we get the blueprint up. Actually hit the link here. So I know that Ruby was here last week, and thank you all for letting me do it today. I had an awards ceremony for my daughter at her school last week, so wasn't able to attend, so I appreciate your flexibility. I won't read the vision statement as it's similar to, or it's the same as the elementary school, and the core values and the theory of action, which is our first couple of pages. You know, we built our school improvement plan based on the four strategic objectives: support safe schools, engage the community, enhance teaching and learning, and leverage leadership policy and funding. The group that worked with me on this, we put together a small school council. It took us a little while to get going this year based on the pandemic, but we had two students, Lauren, Todd, and Jay Peters. We had two parents, Adam Holmes and Stacy Camello, and two of our teachers worked with us, Candra Makram and Gillian Griffith. So I want to thank them for their work on this. We sent several meetings, kind of looking at, really, this one was looking at last year, the 2019-2020 school improvement plan, educational blueprint, and really started there just to decide, you know, what were we able to accomplish based on some of our restrictions early on. And as we go through this, you'll see that we surprisingly were able to get a fair amount of stuff accomplished this year, still while managing the pandemic and everything that that brings. Once the school improvement plan or educational blueprint for us was finished, or at least the draft was designed by the school council, I did share with the administrative team, Mrs. Cabral and Mr. Martin. We went through it and kind of just reworded things, cleaned it up a little bit, and then finally presented to our faculty last week at our June faculty meeting. So what I'll do is I'll go through each one of the strategic objectives fairly quickly, and at the end of each objective, if that are priorities, I guess, if you want to ask some questions, I'll stop after each one, if that makes sense. Feel free to stop me at any point. The way we set this up is anything that is bolded is something that we really didn't get a lot accomplished with this year. Either we couldn't do it, and it's going to be a carryover, or in some ways, it didn't, we were restricted in the current situation. Some of the other ones that are just regular font have been adjusted slightly, or they're brand new. So the first one was continued yearly implementation of updated Alice-based protocols and drills for students and staff. You know, right before the pandemic last year, we were, I would say, three quarters of the way through our Alice protocols. We were getting ready for a, almost like a mock drill, and we had just done some of our evacuation walks to our reunification location. Our plan back then was to do a drill, kind of a final drill, in May, and obviously that didn't happen. So this year, we spent some time, once we finally got back in the building as one large group, kind of reinforcing what we already learned, and we'll continue to implement the rest of our Alice drills so that students and staff are prepared, and we finish all of our training. This concept of piloting the Crusade Hour, Power Hour, this tiered accountability system, it's been on last year. We didn't do a lot with it this year, and it's something we will plan for in the future. I won't go into a lot of detail about it, but really, it's kind of a break in the day. It's a common break in the schedule for everybody, where we're able to implement some activities, some discipline for those students that may need to meet some discipline requirements that can't do it after school, some tutoring and training and so forth. It's all based on a tiered system, kind of like an RTI model. Next year's schedule does have a small block of time built in, a 30-minute period where we could potentially pilot this, but there's still some work to do on that. Expand the PBIS check-in, checkout model to support Tier 2 students. This is something we did last year informally, and had planned this year to bring it back, which got delayed, so it'll be something we start with next year. There is a social-emotional resource site that was designed by our special ed department with some help from our guidance department. We will continue to reference this and make it more available to staff and eventually to students with a focus on some of the social-emotional needs that we're going to see coming out of the pandemic. That ties right into, you know, our focus for next year, one of our goals is going to be, you know, starting to address post-COVID situations. How has this impacted students? How has this impacted staff? And build some professional development around that. We will continue some of the initiatives around the Safe and Supportive Schools Action Plan. If you remember, we had a two-year grant where we were working with the Safe and Supportive Schools. The grant expired last year, so we're going to put together an action plan, hopefully an action team, to continue to implement some of those strategies that the group kind of learned through that grant. It is outside of the grant, but we will continue to work on promoting diversity, equity, inclusion, and a few other programs. Providing training opportunities for students, faculty, and families with Aspen. The Aspen program, you know, kind of the perfect storm. We got rid of our iPass system. We brought in Aspen, and then the pandemic hit. So there were not a lot of training opportunities for staff. There were some basic opportunities, but we really are going to focus on some specific training for staff next year, and families, so that the process continues to go smoother in terms of how to use the functionality of Aspen from the parent's side and the student/teacher side. Explore options for our guidance department to utilize a therapy dog. This is something that we've discussed, and I know the elementary school has discussed. We're fortunate right now, Mr. Vance, one of our adjustment counselors' neighbor, has a service dog, and he is a trained service dog, and he's been bringing him in on Wednesdays to try it out this year, and hopefully we will continue to have that option next year, and then look to potentially have a full-time therapy dog, service dog. The kids love it. It's a great thing to see him walking the building, going through the cafeteria. Sometimes kids just come into guidance, need a break, and they'll sit with the dog for a little while. So it's been a pretty cool experience so far, and we're going to continue to look at what that looks like for us in the future. So that's the first Support Safe Schools strategic priorities for us. I don't know if there's any questions, or I can continue on.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the Alice protocols, is it in coordination with the future drills with Chief Doofly and the Carver PD?
Yeah, we have an Alice, a team that meets with the chief of police and the chief of fire and deputy chief Jesse Boyle, along with the staff, a team in our building, and our resource officer. They're a tremendous asset to us, and they've been very supportive. So yes, they're part of our team for sure.
Thank you.
Great, Jason?
Thank you. Can you give a little more clarification on the service dog? I've never seen that in a SIP before, so I'm just, I'm curious about it. What would be the desired outcome? I know you mentioned it a little bit, but is it, was there a, like, an antecedent that led up to this? Or I'm just curious about how this came to be, because it's something new that I haven't seen before.
Yeah, it's something that we have talked about for the last couple of years. It's come up quite a bit.
I can give a little background on that.
Sure.
So actually, we had a former school adjustment counselor, Kimberly Dwayne, had a service dog, and they'd done some research on it, and it'd come forward. And Kim was actually bringing her dog in, I think, the last two years she was employed here. Not daily, a few days a week, and they just saw a lot of benefits from the dog. But then obviously, when Kim left employment with us, that changed, you know, because it was her dog, it was her service dog, she was bringing it in. And there's been a lot of people who've shown interest in that. And then also, it's become, it has become a wide discussion in my mind in terms of, and I can't speak for the Mike in the school improvement council because I wasn't there, but my thought process would be, you know, falling under this concept of, you know, Safe and Supportive Schools, or Safe Schools is the whole concept that, you know, we're just trying to think of different ways, different avenues, different approaches that we can use with students in terms of giving them social-emotional support. And we found the dog, for the small time that it came in with Kim before she left, to be beneficial. I don't know if that fully addresses it, but...
That's good. It was just, it's unique, and I just want a little more context. That's all. That's good. Thank you.
Mike, you saying the therapy snapping turtle didn't work out?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay.
So moving on to engage the community. The first one is something we had put as a focus last year, and obviously, this was limited, but really trying to get out into the community and establishing annual events that encourage community-wide engagement. We do some fun things in the, around the holidays. We do some decorating and different things, so inviting the community into that, making use of the planetarium more, getting our students out in the public. You know, we've talked about concerts in the park and a culinary team providing food. So bringing the pathways, stuff forward, making connections with the community, and then creating these annual traditions is something we want to focus on. Apply and obtain Drug Free Communities Grant through a partnership with the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, Carver Cares, and Carin Crusaders. I may defer to Mr. Neef on this one, but there is a grant that we have been fortunate to, been asked to apply for. It is a 10-year grant, which is over $1 million that's dispersed over the course of 10 years, about $125,000 a year, where you can hire staff and you can create these prevention programs, maybe a diversionary program, which we've been talking about for some time, to support students and substance abuse. I know Mr. Neef's been working on that.
Yeah, I've been talking about this a little, because this came out of the Carver Cares group, and actually, we had a meeting this evening prior to this meeting. And they actually, the group we work with, the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which is like the regional group that we work with, they said that we, as a community, were prime position to go for this federal grant, and it's based on having kind of a standing community group that's been working on the issue of substance abuse, which that Carver Cares group has become that. It's maintained over time. So they actually supported us, along with High Point Treatment Center, in applying for the grant, so they were in coordination with us. Actually, Ron did a lot on the grant. And the key thing it would do is it would hire a person who would actually be responsible for coordinating all of our work around substance abuse prevention in the community. So the person would be an employee of, the person would be employed by the school district because the grant would be coming to the school district, we'd be receiving the money. But, you know, the grant specifically would, you know, hire this person. Then there's obviously some additional monies to run some programs. So both Plymouth and Middleborough have received this grant in the past, and it's originally for five years, and then after five years, you can reapply for an additional five years. And what's happening is, I believe, actually Plymouth is coming up on...
Nine years.
Nine. So they're, and you can't apply for a third time. So I think that's why the Carver Cares group, this, you know, the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, is a kind of a regional group, and our three, the people we're partnered with are Plymouth and Middleborough. So I think they were looking at it, since Plymouth and Middleboroughs might be coming offline, that if we could shift to Carver and have Carver come online and maintain that regional collaboration, that that would really be beneficial. So we applied for the grant. We'll find out supposedly by September 1st if we receive the grant or not.
Excellent.
So more information will come.
Sounds great. Excellent.
Another opportunity through Plymouth County Outreach, the Hub Program is an opportunity for, it's almost like wraparound services. It's for our, any families or students in need. There is a program and a grant that we've been asked to participate in. Again, it's a partnership with, and you've been part of this one, again, Mr. Neef as well, with Plymouth, I think Wareham, Middleborough, but it provides immediate services for families, and it helps the families, it kind of walks them through the programs that are available for them, but before they get the funding for those programs, they will fund and support families. So we're fortunately part of that potential grant moving forward.
If it's okay, if I could say something on this as well.
Yes.
If they would have smiled into my mask. Because I actually, whenever I have the opportunity to talk about this, I like to really give credit to our police department and Chief Doofly.
Yep.
So Plymouth County Outreach, and you may know it better this way, or the community may know it better this way, is it started with, actually, the East Bridgewater Police Chief and the Plymouth Police Chief saying, you know, "We're tired of going to overdoses and not having real supports to offer people." So what they decided to do, it's, as I said, it started in East Bridgewater and Plymouth. They said, "If there is an overdose in the community, the next day, we're going to connect with substance abuse providers, like a High Point Treatment Center, and we're going to go out to the home, and we're going to offer services. And people may take it, they may not take it, but we're going to, this is what we're going to do, because we want to try to be preventative." Chief Doofly was the third person in on that, and for a while, it was Plymouth, Carver, and East Bridgewater that were leading this group and doing this sort of outreach. Eventually, all of Plymouth County, and there's 27 towns in Plymouth County, are now doing this together, and it's actually a model that's being replicated across the country. So Chief Doofly, I wanted to take a minute to brag about him a little bit, because he's really been vital in this work, and if he was here, he would downplay it and say, "Oh, it's a nice thing, and it's the right thing to do." But he really has been vital in terms of the formation of the Plymouth County Outreach Group, and like I said, it's a model that's being replicated. Now, what they're saying is, "We need to do more." So now this whole PCO hub has come up, where they're actually creating these wraparound services. It doesn't even have to be on substance abuse. It could be any family need. And what happens now, Mr. Schultz is going to be a member of that group, and so is Mrs. Mestis. They've both joined, and the guidance teams, and they're going to have regular meetings where they can bring families and say, "We're concerned about this family because they have food instability, they have housing instability." Things that could possibly lead to, I'm not saying that all, that doesn't always lead to substance abuse, but things that could possibly lead eventually to substance abuse. We want to provide these services to families, and it's all being coordinated through this hub group, this hub group, and they've invited us to participate in, and starting next year... Well, I think Mike actually has attended. And, and they've invited us to participate in, and starting next year, well, I think Mike's actually attended, Mike's guidance team has attended the first meetings this year. And so I just think it's an exciting opportunity in terms of our regional collaboration. But I wanted to go back to that beginning part and give Chief Doofly due credit for us to, for PCO to actually being formed, which was like four or five years ago now.
That's awesome.
Right.
I know why I'm apologizing for that.
I don't know that I knew the whole history, but...
There's a history teacher of yours.
Yes.
But it's more that I just want to give Chief Doofly credit.
Expand the partnership with local businesses and organizations to support school-wide initiatives. I think a lot of times, we look for fundraising opportunities and some support in different places, but really expanding that to, to businesses and organizations where they almost sponsor certain events and activities. Through those partnerships, hopefully, we provide more internship opportunities for students. And ultimately, you know, when you build those partnerships and they get to see the kids in action doing stuff, I think it'll increase scholarship opportunities and so forth. So just kind of building that, those relationships. Continue to develop and promote the middle high school parent-teacher organization. You know, right before the pandemic, we were kind of getting a little bit of steam. We had two or three parents in the PTO when I took over. Our goal has always been to have representation at every grade level. And then with the representation at every grade level, have the PTO sponsor an event for every grade level. We do lots of things, certainly this time of year and throughout the year. And I think it's important for that organization to develop sort of those relationships at each grade level and support whatever program it may be. It could be a trip to Canterbury Lake Park, it could be the Patriot Place trip for the sixth and seventh grade, Camp Bourne Dale. And it wouldn't be they would sponsor the entire event, but they'd be involved in some of the planning and maybe offset some of the costs. It was, you notice it's bold, it was somewhat delayed this year. And we did have a small group that got together, but not meeting in person definitely was, impacted the number of people that participated and so forth. So our goal is to continue to grow that. It'll be a focus for next year. Anybody that wants to join the PTO, please reach out, is my little plug there. We definitely could use members. Continue to promote the pathways. You know, we have a lot of stuff going on with pathways. We will do that through videos and presentations. We'll continue to do that throughout the year. And eventually, starting next year, just getting into grades four and five with our, with our students to show them what we're doing, do some demonstrations, get them involved in some of the activities we're offering. Create a social media resource page and establish a social media policy. Really, this is about the fact that we, we realize that over time, people come and go, and there are multiple pages for multiple activities and clubs. So really try to clean that up and get some control over that, so that if a person leaves a position, the next person doesn't have to, you know, have a Nationalized Society Part II or Part III or whatever. So establishing a resource page for families, and then having a policy to kind of go with that and some expectations where we can manage that with them. Provide opportunities for middle high school students to promote pathways, showcase pathways at the elementary school, we talked about that in the promotion of pathways. And then align the senior internship program with the pathways programs to provide meaningful enriching student experiences. And that may seem a little deceiving, but the internship program now does provide, obviously, meaningful experiences for students. Our goal is to really make sure that if you're in a particular pathway and you're trying to graduate with a specific designation or degree, then your internship should relate directly to that. Sometimes our students who may not be in a pathway will be doing an internship in something that they enjoy to do, and that's, you know, that's still okay. But when you're in a pathway, really focusing on the internship matching the work that you're doing. So that is strategic priorities. That's engage the community in our strategic priorities. Any questions on that?
Anyone?
No. Nope.
Thank you.
Okay. Enhance teaching and learning. Develop a two-year PD plan with a focus on project-based learning, NEASC, and pathway. We have a lot going on the next two years. And one of the things we wanted to do is to create a, a well-thought-out sequential professional development plan with these things in mind. And this is something we're going to work on over the summer. We'll present to staff and get feedback so that, you know, everything is making sense and flowing to the next part, whether it be their project-based learning or our NEASC visit, and to continue to work with pathways. Create a vision of the graduate and ensure the core values and beliefs promote a commitment to continuous learning as future planning for NEASC. Our NEASC visit is scheduled for the spring of 2024. It's a little different this year. The standards have changed. Instead of seven, there are five. And they do two visits. They have a sort of a mini-visit where they help you set your goals and establish some criteria for you. And then the accreditation visit would be in the spring of 2024. I think our mini-visit goal-setting is the fall of '22, I believe. So the work this year will be establishing and looking at the vision of the graduate, the core values and beliefs, which are going to definitely align with where we are with project-based learning and our pathways. Enhance and promote the pathways programs with phasing and of additional courses over, and evaluating the two-year plan. So we're, we'll be, at the end of next year, we'll be in the two-year, we've completed two years, and we're going to need to continue to evaluate that and plan for year three. Enhance opportunities to support students as they transition from grades five and six and eight and nine. This is a focus where, you know, we've identified that we could do some work with to support those transitions. Develop a curriculum revision cycle to align with the state and national standards. That's sort of a standing strategic priority, and it's really providing opportunities for that, for that work to happen. Continue with the MAP assessment in grades six, seven, and eight. There's an error there. And look to expand into grade nine. Establish scheduling committee to explore schedule options to best address students' needs. So the scheduling committee has been established. We met a few times in March. We will start meeting at the start of school next year to look at the following year's schedule, and then really where we would go in the future with scheduling. And develop and formalize a structure for middle school team planning, just looking at our middle school structure and how we can support whatever planning and team concepts for the middle school. And one of the things we've talked about is bringing in the NELMS, New England League of Middle Schools, to provide some, some support there in terms of team building and promoting the development of our, of our teams or supporting our teams. Any questions on teaching and learning? Yes.
Two questions, actually.
For the, for the NEASC stuff, so we are currently accredited with, with the New England Associates of School and Colleges?
Yes.
And so is there, I'm assuming that those things are, are things that we need to do to maintain our accreditation or working towards the renewal of it?
Yes, it's, every 10 years, you're required to go through the accreditation process.
Okay.
So we were supposed to actually go through, I believe, this, this...
2022, I think.
Fall of 2022, and they've delayed, they gave us an option based on the pandemic. They weren't doing accreditations. And right now, they're doing virtual.
Okay.
I think, so we've delayed it out a little bit for the, for the fall of 2022, for the first visit and then the accreditation. So it's something we, in order to keep our accreditation, we have to do it on a 10-year cycle.
Perfect. And then the other question I had was regarding the develop a curriculum revision to align with state and national standards. Is there a particular area where we're not currently in line? Or is that just sort of like a, one of those general, as things change, make sure we're still...
Yeah, it's, it's the second, yeah.
It's the general?
Just to make sure that we have time for the staff to continue to look at their curriculum, their scope and sequence, and just make sure that they're in line with any changes to state and national standards.
So there's no particular areas of concern right now?
No.
Okay, good. Good answer. Thanks.
Anyone else? Jason?
I really like the idea of the two-year PD cycle. It's, you know, the long-term planning. With that, will there be choice involved? Or is it more targeted whole school, like everyone's going to be working on project-based learning or pathways? Are you going to go kind of more individualized team level? What was the general vision for that?
Yeah, so there would, there will definitely be, depending on where we are, there'll definitely be choice. Because there's a, there is a project-based learning group. There is a team of five of us that are sort of the leadership group, and there are 15 staff members that'll be trained this summer. So start of school year, next year, there'll be 20 people that have the basis of project-based learning and start to, you know, explore what it looks like in our building. I've been part of some other leadership training within the project-based network with other schools in the area. And your first year is sort of implementation and establishing some basic goals. So in some districts, they, they decided that for their staff, they would do two project-based learning assignments or projects or units over the course of the year, and then they would assess them. I think some of the, the first-year project-based learning stuff will be the staff that is trained trying some of these projects and then sharing with staff. The NEASC stuff would be whole school, broken up into groups typically by standards and assessing, and doing a sort of a self-assessment. And then the pathway stuff, again, it would depend on where we are in the pathways. But, you know, maybe it would be a pathways day with some of the, the eight through 12 curriculum people, and then possibly match it with a NELMS day where the middle school teams can kind of collaborate. And then, again, bringing, I think it's important, no matter what we do, that we bring our stuff, our information, what we've learned, back to the general staff, and we share out. So that you may not be directly rated to some of the work of what NELMS is doing, but you're getting reported out and helps with the transition for students in seven to eight. And maybe what, maybe they could pick up some project-based learning stuff and bring it into the, the team model. So a lot together, what's a part we would share. And the biggest thing that I, that we as a group, as a team and as a building, is that the, the PD is relevant, and there, it's something that they want to do, and they have a say in it.
That's awesome. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Andy?
I have something.
Okay.
It's a quick question, Mike. Just under that, under that one with the PD. Can you just expand on the create a vision of the graduate and ensure the core values and beliefs?
So we have to, one of the things that we have to do as part of the NEASC visit is create this vision of the graduate, this concept of what, what we want the students, when they graduate, to be able to, know and be able to do. And with that comes some core values and beliefs. Like what, what is that, what is the essential part of our students? What are the things that are, we want to see, skills? We have this in, Mr. Neef was famous for a presentation that I sat through many times, the acronym in the auditorium. Was it the PRIDE acronym?
PRIDE.
Yeah. So 21st Century Learning Expectations, you see the two banners in the building? So we're really looking at those standards and saying, is this something that we still applies to what we're doing, and a lot of it, I'm sure, will? And then, based on where we are, and things have changed quite a bit in 10 years, what is our vision, what do we want our students to be able to do when they graduate? And a lot of this is going to tie into what's above, which is, you know, the project-based learning and the pathways. They're developing skills by going through that process that'll help us sort of, by default, create the vision of the graduate. So it, it's, it all ties together. It just has to sort of be sequentially laid out, so we are getting our professional development, but we're also achieving the goal of some of the work we're doing.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Any other questions?
It's very small, Eddie, but I just pulled up the current statement of core values and beliefs. I'm just sharing the screen. I have to mark a little bit to make that...
Social and civic expectations.
But they'll be looking at those and do they need revision, be to be done to match the vision of the graduate? Because those are the statements from last time we went through our process back in 2012. And they were originally adopted in 2010, so they're 11 years old.
Right. All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for pulling that up.
That was quick. And then last is leverage leadership policy and funding. Access professional development funds through district support and other funding. Continue to collaborate with districts to apply for pragmatic funds, funding grants to move college and career-ready pathway opportunities. Those two things really are, you know, a lot of the work that, that Meredith does in terms of searching out grants, working with teams of teachers and administrators, Ron, to say, are there ways to offset some of the, the work that we do through these grants? And I think we've been, the project-based learning is, is a grant that we got. The Innovations Grant is some examples of that work, and there are more that we'll continue to explore now that we're part of some of this networking that's going on with the innovations programs and mass hire. Develop a five-year facility plan to support building-based initiatives. Basically, we have a capital plan for the building. We have a technology plan. But I don't know that we have sort of a specific five-year facility plan. And facility plan may not be the right word, but really looking at not the big-ticket items, like, you know, the library, the auditorium, the lockers, more so looking at some of smaller things like the classrooms, the furniture, some of the smaller items that can, can change the, the feel of the building, the, the setting where kids learn. So when I was athletic director, we had a uniform rotation, uniform replacement rotations, kind of the same concept where if you didn't replace the uniforms every, we were on a five-year cycle. So every year, we could get a couple teams worth of uniforms. So, you know, one year, it might be girls soccer and boys basketball. Next year, it's wrestling and cross-country. So kind of that concept where looking at some small-ticket items, whether it be, you know, in the summer of 2022, the English department has an opportunity to assess their classrooms and determine if they want to continue to have rows with attached desks or go to tables in comfortable seating. So just looking at the smaller items in the building that'll change the, the teaching for staff. There's, there's this concept of flexible seating that's out there now and providing opportunities for students. So looking at a five-year plan with the smaller stuff, working with Capital and Ron on the bigger stuff, but continuing to have this cycle where we're, we're definitely looking to replace the, the things in the building so that it stays fresh and students are engaged and so forth. And then finally, and this was something that has come up a couple times, not so much a booster club, but really an opportunity for developing a partnership with post-graduates through an alumni association. There are a handful of parents that I have had the opportunity to meet over the last couple of years whose children are now going through the school system. Some of you here maybe have experienced that as well. And what we're finding, and Mr. Neef sent out an email, I think sometime in January, that there are several students who have graduated over the years through the Carver Public Schools, you know, back from when I was in high school in 88, 89, when I graduated from Plymouth, there were Carver students who have come back to not only coach, but are very successful. And they are looking for ways to give back and, and share their story. So creating sort of a mini website, an alumni association where they can make donations, they can provide services. They may have been a successful engineer, doctor, actor, and maybe offer internships, and whatever it may be, but giving back to the community. So developing an alumni association is something that, you know, Andrew, Andrew Solavoda had talked about previously, Adam Holmes on the school council has talked about, but providing an opportunity for graduates of the community to, to pay it forward.
Excellent.
And that's leverage leadership policy and funding.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions? No? Thank you very much for coming in and for going through all of that. It's very exciting. I look forward to seeing what unfolds.
Thank you, Mike.
So that brings us to recommendations from the... So that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent.
Hey, our first one is the memorandum of agreement with the APC, the Teachers' Unit. If you'd like to opt out of the agreement. First, I'd just like to thank the members of the negotiating team for the time and efforts they put in towards putting this agreement together for both the APC and for our subcommittee of the school committee. So, you know, we have, the teachers have ratified the MOA that the subcommittee has negotiated with them. I'll review some of the key points of the agreement, and that, and they include, it's a one-year agreement, it's a 0.5% salary increase across the board for FY '22, a $1,000 stipend paid to each member of the unit prior to the end of this school year, a $1,000 stipend paid in April of 2022 to each member of the unit, an increase in course reimbursement for next school year from $1,000, $1,050 per course to $1,250 per course, and the formation of a health and safety committee and ensure the maintenance of a health, healthy and safe workplace, which obviously has become a huge focus this year during COVID. And that's not every single piece of the MOA. The committee has the tie-in in their background, but those are the key financial terms. As I said, I wanted to mention the health and safety committee, you know, because I do think that's important work that we're going to continue to do that's, that we started this year. And so it would be my recommendation that the committee ratify the, the MOA. So Tim, I don't know if you want to say a few words about it before the vote, or do you want to wait till after?
Yeah, after.
Yeah, after.
Yeah, because there's two, so.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion, a move that we ratify the, give a talk today. Memorandum of Understanding Reached Between the Teachers Negotiation Subcommittee and the Educational Association of Plymouth and Carver Teachers Union, uh, Unit, excuse me.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, want to do the, okay. And so the second one, memorandum of agreement with the APC ESP unit. Again, I'd like to thank the members of that negotiating team as well. So, and for all their time and energy, we had some really good discussions, and as I did with the APC Teachers' Unit, the ESPs have ratified the MOA that was negotiated with the subcommittee, and I'll review the key points of the agreement, which include, it's a one-year agreement, it's a 45 cent across-the-board raise, it's a $500 stipend paid to each ESP at the end of this school year, $500 stipend to each member of the unit to be paid in April of 2022. One addition we did make is we added a $500 stipend for ESPs who are identified as regularly providing personal care, such as toileting for intensive special needs students. We added one full day of professional development for the ESPs. Again, that's not every piece of the memorandum of agreement, but those are the key financial terms and the, and the big picture items that we've come in agreement to. You know, obviously, we support this, and my recommendation would be that the committee ratify the MOA.
I move that we ratify the memorandum of understanding reached between the Teachers' Negotiation Subcommittee and the Education, Educational Association of Plymouth and Carver ESP Unit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for the show of appreciation. There was so much, if not, not even just last school committee meeting, but this entire year of all the hard work of all those that employed, employed this Carver School District. It has been an incredibly, obviously challenging year. This is, a conversation came up with, we went to a retirement gathering that, this last week, and there was a retired teacher that said, when we, you know, learning to be an educator, it's very common for the instructor to remind educators of the importance of being flexible. This year, that lesson was tested beyond our imaginations. Educators and all school, uh, school employees had to reinvent our jobs. We did things this year we could never have foreseen to be part of our responsibilities. We rewrote the playbook. As we hit the home stretch this week, many of us are reflecting back on this year while still hopeful of what next fall may bring. Next year, we look forward to using what we learned from this year. We look forward to the continued work of our Health and Safety Committee, extended the commitment of providing healthy and safe environments for our children and staff. We will continue to work closely with our education support professionals, expanding our understanding of each other and the work that we do every day. Currently, I was reading a 2020 national survey. They found that 67% of teachers have or have had a second job to make ends meet. Another study in 2019 concluded that the decline in college students pursuing careers as teachers was because of low salaries and difficult working conditions. As the past this year was unknown, changing from one model to the next, it's unknown how the current state of affairs will affect the growing teacher shortage. The Fair Share Amendment just passed through the State House this past Wednesday and will be a ballot question in the fall. If passed in the fall, there'll be more resources available to communities for public education. I am hopeful that most people understand the importance of supporting our educators. The commitment made by our community to make positive change can only benefit our children. In order to make positive change in our school district, we need to be committed to providing necessary support, resources, and favorable working conditions for all that work in the Carver School District. The EA PC of Carver is committed to the children of Carver and knows that their education is an investment in our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so next, school calendar revisions.
All right. Our last item for this evening is, we've actually made some minor adjustments to the school calendar that the committee voted for and approved, I believe, in April. The adjustments are on the half-days. So, you know, the start of the school year would still be Tuesday, the 31st for teachers. So the teachers would have three professional days prior to Labor Day, the 31st, first and second, and students would start on the 7th after Labor Day. No changes there. And in the original calendar, you saw that there was a lot of half-days on Wednesdays. We were asking and making a request to kind of shift that a little bit. So I'll quickly run through the changes we made. The 29th stayed the same. That was the same as the original calendar for a half-day. The October half-days were the 13th and the 27th, which were Wednesdays. We moved it to the 14th and the 28th, which are Thursdays for parent-teacher conferences. November, the one that's red highlighted, did not have a half-day, and it was actually in December, and the AL team made a decision, looking at the calendar, looking at where the holiday break was, Thanksgiving break, that actually made more sense to move that half-day to a Wednesday, November 10th, and not have a half-day in December. Historically, sometimes we wouldn't have a half-day in November because of Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. The AL team recommended that we make that shift, though, and actually connect it with the Veterans Day, the Thursday, the 11th. January stayed the same. It did not change. February, we just moved, it was on the 9th, we moved it to the 8th, Tuesday, just to get some different days involved. Again, parent-teacher conferences in the, in March went from the Wednesdays to Thursdays. In general, the faculty and staff and the administration felt that Thursday night was better for parent-teacher conferences than the Wednesdays. April stayed the same. May, we moved to Friday, which is actually, has typo on the calendar. That should be Friday, the 6th, not Friday, the 14th. So Friday, May 6th would be the half-day, and that's the prom day, which is historically the day we have a half-day at the high school for the prom. That's high school only. Historically, the elementary school does not have a half-day in May. They have one in June where they talk about student placement for the next year. So the elementary kept their half-day on June 1st. The only other change in here is we did change the full-day professional day from the Columbus Day weekend to December. The rationale for that change was actually a request from the Middle High School. Historically, they've put in for the, they put in for the New York City trip. Historically, they've gone on a Friday and they've, they, it's, sometimes Fridays are tough in New York City. Don't know how it will be post-COVID. So they actually thought, maybe if we tried to go on a different day, that the, it'd just be less traffic, less congestion, less people. So they made a proposal to go on the 9th, which is the Thursday. Then those kids returning from New York would not have school that next day because they get home from that trip pretty late, generally after midnight, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. So, teachers would still, you know, be a professional day, but the eighth-grade students would have that day off after their New York City trip, which the committee has tempor, you know, approved contingent on that those things are going to be fine in December. And so those are all, those are all the changes from the calendar that was originally presented. Like I said, most of them are minor shifts in half-days and not a major change to the calendar.
That December 10th date, Scott, that is for both buildings, right? Not just Middle High School?
Yes, that would be, that would be, so it would be a professional day would be December 10th.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised school calendar as presented while changing the first, May 14th to May 6th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Okay, that brings us to reports from the school committee. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Jen?
I'll say something. Because I always say something. Wrapping up my first year on the school committee, it's been a wild ride, and participating in several of the negotiation teams was really informative, you know, and, and even being on the school committee, I've learned perspectives and situations were not always what I seen just from my parent perspective and community perspective, which is what I had prior to joining the school committee. It's been eye-opening to see all of the behind-the-scenes stuff that happens so that our children get a quality education, and I've found myself humbled and in awe of what happens on a daily basis to educate our kids, because it's so much more than I ever could have imagined as a parent and a community member. You know, I don't work in a school and I, I never had, so I've, I've gained a unique perspective this year, being on the school committee. I want to thank the parents that came to speak tonight, and I appreciate that people are gaining the courage to come out and share their voice because we are our children's voice, and we need to continue to be proactive for what we believe in. With that said, I do encourage everyone to continue to reach out to Governor Baker and Desi. Don't let them close the doors on you. And so I just appreciate everything that they shared tonight. And one comment in particular struck me when they said, you know, we need to put the children first, and there's been a lot of thanking of the school community, but not the children, you know, and I think Scott brought it up last meeting, but our children have been incredible this year, and what they have endured is nothing any of us could have imagined. The kids in our community are resilient, the families are strong, and as a community, we did it. Three and a half more days, and we did it. We survived the longest school year ever, coming out of a pandemic last year into this year. So, great job, everybody. Enjoy your summers. I hope everybody gets a chance to relax, and we'll just keep the hope that the fall is much more normal and much more what we like to see as we continue to push on. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to adjourn to executive session to consider a complaint brought against a public officer or individual and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for non-union personnel and not return to open session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Jason?
Aye.
You got it, all right, aye.
Jen?
Jen Pratt, aye.
Colleen?
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clority, aye. That concludes the public portion of our meeting at 8:04 PM.